Recording in progress.
So with that, the Democratic City Council is now in order. And I'd like to welcome Betty here in the audience, and I appreciate all the kind words I'm getting from the public regarding my father, who's currently in the hospital and will be shortly passing. So with that, I would like to start the meeting. Before I also like to say that we're going to adjourn this meeting in the memory of Walleye Tax as a Community along with Rob Elementary School. And so we'll have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, and I'm going to ask who those two, city clerk to announce those two individuals.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Maggie Burbank Yanoki of Montevista Unitarian Universalist Congregation, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Council Member Lopez.
Great. Please stand.
Gathered in this place, the people's place, we let go of the fullness of our days and center our best intentions on the good work we are called here to do, the trustworthy, dutiful governance of our beloved city of Montclair. May we honor the ancestors of this land and those descendants yet to come with our integrity, our ethics, and our love for this place we know as home. In honor of Senator Bobby Kennedy, who was killed 54 years ago today in nearby Los Angeles, we reflect on his words. The purpose of life is to contribute in some way to making things better. May each and every individual in our city find warm welcome and deep belonging among us, and may all of our actions bring us closer to making things better. Amen.
Please join me in reciting our pledge of allegiance to one of the greatest symbols of freedom on the face of the earth. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Ru?
Present.
Dutre?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know we don't have any presentations, but I have a certificate of special congressional recognition from Congressman Norma Torres for the Memorial Day ceremony, so I'll just pass it on to the councilmembers. They want to take a look at that. Thank you. And so at this time, we have now public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, or they wish to address it, or they consent counter items on the agenda. And the members will have five minutes. As you know, the council can't respond to any comments, any items not on the agenda. Any members of the public that wish to speak here in the audience, there's a speaking card that you can submit, and it's on my left here, and you just submit it to Michael here at the city clerk, next to the city clerk. And if you're on an electronic computer device, you can hit the raised hand feature, request to speak on Zoom, and then if you're calling in, you can hit star nine on your phone if you wish to speak. So at this time, I'll ask the city clerk if we have any public speakers.
I have no request to speak, and I don't see anyone raising their hand on Zoom.
Okay. So with that, we will now move on to public hearings. We have, today, we have two public hearing items. The first one is a second reading to consider adoption of ordinance number 22-1001. This is regarding the mandatory organic waste disposal reduction. This item was heard at the last city council meeting as a first reading. As we, unless someone wants to, we will skip the staff presentation. I'm going to open this, open this for a public hearing, and I'm going to ask if any members of the public wish to speak on this particular item. Again, you raise your, raise your hand, raise your speaking request hand on Zoom, star nine on the phone, or if you're in the audience, please just indicate you wish to speak on this item. Any speakers, Andrea?
Yes, Carolyn Raft on Zoom.
Oh, okay. And then again, that's five minutes, and Carolyn, I think you're on mute. Carolyn, you may want to unmute yourself. You're muted, and it's all yours, Carolyn.
Yeah, I actually just have a question on this because I was reading the whole thing, and I didn't quite understand. Businesses, because a lot of them, they use the big bins. Now, are they going to be, have to convert to the three tier as far as the waste, like the blue, the black, the green? And I don't quite understand how that is going to work itself. So that's my question.
That's it? No other comments, Carolyn?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm not sure if, Eddie, can you respond to that, please?
Well, the issue relates mostly to commercial businesses that deal with food products. So they, in Carolyn's case, she will not be required to get an additional bin that would require the disposal of organic waste. That would be achieved by the same process that a residential unit would achieve this by, and that'd be placing the organic waste in a plastic bag or other compostable bag and place that in the green waste recycling bin. If it were a business that dealt with food products such as a restaurant or other tier one or tier two type food service entities, then they would have to comply with the more stringent requirement. But in this particular case, getting by with just putting it, the organic waste into a plastic bag and deposited into the green waste recycling bin would be sufficient.
Thank you. Any other public speakers, Andrea? No? Doesn't look like it. So we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. I'll bring the man back to city council. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved by, is there a second motion?
I'll second.
Second by whom?
I did.
Seconded by Councilmember Lopez. Any comments on the motion? Councilmember Lopez?
We've bannered this issue back and forth for, what, six to eight months now? I understand this is final passage. This is going to happen regardless of my vote on this issue, and it is a mandate that is forced upon all localities from the Oregon border to the Mexican border. That said, what I don't like is, what's next to follow is a proposal to be brought before council to raise trash rates to accommodate the increased cost of business that's going to be burdened upon BRTech to comply with this, these mandates. It'll be passed on to residents. At a future meeting, rate increases will come to us, proposals on that. I'm uncomfortable with that. That's why I voted against this issue at the last meeting, spoke out about it when we were meeting via Zoom in the fall or early part of the year. But knowing that it's going to happen, and there's nothing we can do about it, we're just going to have to live with it, in the future, I would remind folks, tomorrow's election day, if you don't like these type of mandates being forced upon you, and subsequently rate increases for the services that are to be provided, don't vote for candidates that support these types of legislation and these bills and force it upon you. That said, Mr. Mayor, I'll conclude my comments, and I'll wait for the vote.
And I believe the candidates you're talking about, the ones are in Sacramento?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Not the candidates that are in the diocese that were being forced to do this?
No, not here. Sacramento politicians, absolutely.
Yeah, so let's just clarify that. We don't like it, but we have no choice. Mayor Protem Ru?
Yes, I had comments similar to what Councilmember Lopez said. I think this is a bit ridiculous. I don't understand why we need it. I do not have any food waste at home, period. This is National Hunger Awareness Day, so if you have extra food at home, you should be boxing it up and giving it to somebody who needs it. I don't like the fact that we're going to, that there will be rate increase. I can't afford it. My neighbors can't afford it. I think long-term, and you heard me, you've heard me say this whenever we talk about trash, we need waste-to-energy plants. They do them in other westernized countries. They're very efficient, and they're much more environmentally sound than this. We're wasting land using a landfill, and we can do waste-to-energy plants that will also provide an alternative source of energy. So I've had my say on this. Thank you.
Okay, let's do roll call. I'm going to start. Let's do electronic vote. Okay, that's adopted unanimously, and we'll move on to the next item, which is the second public hearing item to consider adoption resolution number 22-3350.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to read the title of the ordinance?
Please read it by title number only. Thank you.
Ordnance number 22-1001, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Montclair, amending sections within chapter 6.02 definitions, repealing section 6.16.025, commercial recycling and organic waste recycling slash diversion, and 6.16.030, garbage to be wrapped of the Montclair Municipal Code, and adding chapter 6.17, establishing a mandatory organic waste disposal program.
Thank you. Now we'll go to the next public hearing item. Again, this is resolution number 22-3350. This is regarding 5006 and 5011, Mission Boulevard. Okay, who wants to lead off as far as presentation? And I will open the public hearing, by the way.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, on May 9, the Planning Commission approved a mitigated negative declaration and precise plan design related to an application by New Crossings LLC requiring approval of amendment to the general plan, a tentative parcel map requesting approval, I'm sorry, a tentative parcel map and a precise plan of design to facilitate construction of an industrial warehouse on a 51.13 acre site on the north side of Mission Avenue, Mission Boulevard, just east of Montevista Avenue. The proposed site is comprised of three abutting parcels proposed for consolidation into a single parcel to achieve a quality development. Industrial warehouse proposed for the site would be approximately 115,300 square feet in size, and an existing 3,500 square foot existing building is proposed for demolition to make way for the new development. In order to achieve consistency between the general plan and zoning and land use designations, create a single unencumbered site of sufficient size and shape to allow for orderly development of the site that is compatible with other industrial uses along the corridor, the City Council is asked to consider resolution number 22-3351. That resolution approves a general plan amendment to change the land use designation of two to three parcels, of two of the three parcels, from general commercial to business park. Resolution number 22-3352, approving tentative parcel map number 20393 to merge the three parcels into a single 5.13 acre developed site, and resolution number 22-340, providing for the final adoption of the industrial warehouse project, initial study and mitigated negative declaration, the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approval of project case number 2022-07. When completed, the proposed project would be, would be a significant improvement to the Mission Boulevard corridor, consistent with other recent projects that have been approved along that corridor. An initial study was prepared for the project, and based on the study's findings, the project could have potential significant adverse environmental impacts on a number of related issues. Those are identified on page 32 of the agenda report under environmental assessment. Those areas include air quality, cultural resources, geology, soils, hazards, and hazardous materials, and tribal cultural resources. Mitigation measures have been developed and are included in the agenda packet. After the agenda report, you will see a full detailed analysis of the initial study and the proposed mitigation measures that are being proposed for the project and will be made a condition of the project going forward. Adoption of the three resolutions produces no direct impact on the general fund, however long-term approval of the project would produce positive long-term economic improvements for the community and improve property values in the area. Staff's recommendation is that the council adopt resolution number 22-3350, granting final adoption of the industrial warehouse project, initial study mitigated negative declaration, and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approving the project under its case number. Adopt resolution number 22-3351, approving the general plan amendment, and adopting resolution number 22-3352, approving tentative parcel map number 20393. With us in the audience this evening to respond to any questions are representatives from BB&amp;K, this is the city's law firm that represents us in these matters, and Michael Diaz, our community development director, as well as our senior associate planner, Sylvia Gutierrez. So if you have any questions, you have a bounty of people who are willing and willing, ready to respond.
Thank you. Any questions from councilmembers this time? Any members of the council have any questions before I go to public comments? If not, any questions? No comment, just questions for staff?
Just a question.
Go ahead.
If I'm correct, this site was once, I believe, an RV sales or storage facility?
That's correct. There were some sort of auto-related uses and sales that occurred many, many years ago, but since I've been here in the last 15, there's not been anything quite like-
So my mind does not deceive me.
No, it's not.
The reason I ask that is, in knowing that there were RV and auto-type uses there, do we, does the applicant have to any type of special mitigation with this because of things that may have leached into the soil? I'm sorry, if I saw, if it's in the report and I didn't see it, I truly apologize. I did read it, but-
I think those are what, some of those items that were related, that were discussed in the staff report about hazardous issues.
Right.
So in the process of doing grading and construction, they'll be, have, they'll have to watch for those kinds of conditions and then make any remediation efforts to whatever they discover. Sometimes they find something, sometimes they don't, but it's basically part of the process.
Okay, thank you.
That is to be determined.
And also, there's a soils report that required to determine any hazardous-
That's correct. For any type of construction, you start with soils reports.
Soils report, yeah. Okay, Councilmember Lopez, any, just questions? No comments?
Questions, yes. Yes, questions. I read in the Planning Commission's report or packet, there was a letter submitted late from a, from a law firm regarding some noise issues, noise abatement, or issues of concern that they had that those wouldn't be adequately addressed. The city manager just said that there was a list of proposed mitigation procedures to alleviate or address some of the concerns that were raised. But in this report, it stated that, that it was received in an untimely manner, so therefore there was not ample time to address those. From the time that this was released to this report of ours, have those issues been looked at? And I have a couple more follow-ups.
Yes, they have. The items, as you mentioned, were submitted at the last minute, literally about an hour before the meeting, so we continued it to give staff the opportunity to address those in conjunction with our colleagues here at BB&amp;K, as well as the persons that put together the environmental mitigation, or the initial study and review documents to begin with, and that's Patrick Cruz, who's here from DUE Deck as well, to answer any specific questions you might have about that. But we did address those items, and they were found to be already adequately covered by the initial study, to the extent that, to get us to where we are today, through the mitigation measures.
So it's implied, according to their opinion, that there would be excessive noise at the site. I'm assuming, or one can deduce from that, that as a result of increased or loud noise, it would be an increased level of traffic flow. So was there a report done on increased traffic flow around the site? Because this is near Montevista and Mission, which is already pretty trafficked as it is. It's going to, I mean, no doubt it's going to increase. I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that those issues are addressed, and how they were addressed. What assurances can I have as a councilmember, or even the general public have, in knowing that traffic flow issues are going to be mitigated?
The issues that are raised in the, in the initial study process have to do with both short-term and long-term noise constraints. Usually, the short-term have to do with demolition and construction activities, and those are limited, are addressed with mitigation measures, as well as conditions of approval regarding timing, when you, when you start work and when you stop work. It's generally, when you have to do demolition and grading, the short-term impacts are, I mean, impacts for noise under construction are relatively short, because they're usually done in a week or two, when guiding, when grading is concluded, to the point where they can start working on the buildings themselves. Operationally, long-term, those are issues that are related, maybe from tra, from traffic coming and going from the site. But this particular site, or any of the new industrial uses we have, the uses are conducted entirely indoors, so there really isn't a whole lot of noise that's generated by the operation of the businesses, because a lot of them are warehouses and do, if they do any kind of assembly or manufacture, it all occurs within the door, within the walls of the building. They're concrete walls, so the noise is pretty much muffled. Coming and going really depends on the business. We don't know what's going to go in, but most of the new buildings that have been constructed in town are local businesses that are sizing up and moving into bigger facilities. That's what occurred next door to the west. And we have very little high distribution running around of trucks going back from any of the users in town. Most of it is pretty low-key operations, and we have not had any noise concerns generally given to us that we had to look into making, you know, addressing in some fashion.
You kind of hit on the follow-up that I was going to have, and that was, have the owners shared what their potential, the folks that would be leasing the property for them, what type of businesses those would be? Was there any indication from the owners as to what they were going to be coming in?
Not at this point.
Okay. I would also have a concern, the business that you alluded to, to the west on the corner, on the northeast, sorry, northeast corner, those poor folks, the moment they set up, their windows had been repeatedly broken, I don't know what's been thrown on them, but they're boarded up quite a bit. I'd hate to see this establishment suffer that same fate if there's indeed no adequate business activity that would deter that.
Yeah, I would say about the windows, because I've been dealing with that too, and talking to the chief about that, so I will not say that that's a general issue out there, that's more of an isolated issue, particularly regarding that particular building. I'll just leave it there.
Okay.
And if you want to talk to the chief more about it, he can probably, and also Michael about it there.
I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Okay, let's now have members of the public speak, and Andrea, you have any members of the public that wish to speak? Again, if you're on Zoom, you're on the, you hit star, or raise your hand feature. I see Carolyn's hand up. I'm not sure if she wants to speak on this item or not. And then if you're on the phone, you hit star nine. And then members of the audience, again, if you haven't filled out the speaking card, please do so. And Andrea, it's all yours.
I just see Carolyn's hand up in Zoom.
Carolyn, are you there? You wish to speak on this item?
No, my thing shows that I did not raise my hand, so, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
That from the previous one.
Thank you. All right. Nobody on Zoom, so anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item? No? Nobody's showing? Okay. Then I'll close the public hearing, and I'll bring this item back to the city council. And I will say this, that I think I read the letters from the attorneys. I know one got resolved, something with the labor union and that organization, a labor union that represent, the attorney representing the labor union was able to get together with the developer and come up with a compromise or a resolution on whatever economic issue they're dealing with there. And the second letter from this other law firm, you know, I looked at it, I feel, and you know, I feel that those issues are being mitigated, are being dealt with in the environmental document. I know the Planning Commission had two meetings on this. The second meeting, the Plan Commission, two members were absent, but three members of the Planning Commission, three all vote, adopted this. This is their recommendation to the city council. I think, you know, this project is not going to have a negative impact. It's, I mean, I've dealt with warehouses where I used to work at. This is much smaller in scale. This is not an Amazon coming in there with lots of trucks and vans and doing lots of, lots of deliveries, or, so I don't, I don't think this project is going to have any significant or very little impact to the community. So I will support this item, and I don't see any speakers from my councilmembers. Any speakers? If not, is there a motion for approval?
Mayor, I move that the item be approved as presented.
Okay, move by Councilmember Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Johnson. No other comments. Let's go ahead and vote.
And just for clarification, that's on all three resolutions? All three resolutions?
Yeah, so just for clarifications on the motion maker, is this is the adoption of the negative declaration, and in addition to that, the adoption of the general plan amendment to change land use designation, which is resolution 22-3351. And finally, this is the adoption of the tentative parcel map under resolution 22-3352. All right. With that, everybody agrees, all three items have been approved, and city clerk, you can do your magic? Well, not on this one. It's not an ordinance change, so you're off the hook. Okay. So now we have the consent counter items, quite a few items on the consent counter. I will start with my right this time. So anybody on my right wish to pull consent counter item?
Mr. Mayor, the only one I would, and just for clarification, item number C as in cat, one.
C1, clarification. Okay? Nothing else on my right? How about my left?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull B like boy four.
B4.
And C like cat three.
C3, clarification?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else?
Nothing for me.
All right.
For purposes of comment, B like boy three.
I'm sorry?
B like boy three.
You want to comment on B3?
Yes.
Okay, well, then you can start commenting right now. We'll start with B3.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and colleagues. I am pleased to see that this is finally being addressed for about two years, maybe give or take a few months. The front of station, Fire Station 2 on Montevista, close to, actually, Montevista and Earnhardt Drive, has looked pretty, pretty bad and in poor shape with some rocks and things. I know that with the widening of Montevista Bridge, some of that was the result of leftover unattended property of ours. But to see this finally addressed, I know I brought it up many times, I appreciate staff on it. I believe Rosemary Horning was on this, correct? So I appreciate Rosemary's efforts, thank you for that, but pleased to see that Station 2 will get a little bit of some beautifying aspects to it and get the landscaping done. I would like to know, though, was, well, it's going to go out to bid, could staff inquire of those, or could staff go to Chino Basin Water Conservation District and ask for some potentially suggested ideas for landscaping? I know we had a presentation from the executive director from Chino Basin several months back. There was some great landscaping that could be used, that is water tolerant, uses less water, looks beautiful with colors. But if that can be taken into consideration in utilizing one of the agencies within our city, I'd appreciate it. But other than that, I'm pleased to see it on the agenda and that it's moving forward. Thank you.
I state that Chino Basin Water Conservation District was included in the planning of the landscaping.
And just for clarification, this item, if approved, will go out for a bid. Okay, item B4.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have what I think is probably a silly question, but I'm a little sensitive, so I just need some clarification. It's about the four pepper projectile systems, which makes perfect sense to me. I just wanted, when I saw the word tank, I got nervous. I know that doesn't mean a vehicle, that's a tank of pepper, whatever, correct?
No, they're air tanks.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted. Thank you. I'm just a little sensitive about that issue.
Thank you. Next item is item C1. Who's that? Who has item C1?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The question is, this is the Pacific Electric Trail. I know it's of tremendous interest to several residents who generally attend the meeting and will call in on it. I wanted to make sure that we are now responsible for all maintenance of that, correct?
We are responsible for maintenance between Montevista Avenue and the City of Claremont.
Right. And that's all we're responsible for.
That is all we are responsible for.
So it doesn't cover the rest of the Pacific Electric Trail, just that, that's what I wanted to make sure. That's what I read, but I wanted to make certain.
You are absolutely correct.
Okay. Councilmember Lopez?
I want to piggyback on that. So then, just for clarification, the part of the trail that is north of the parking lot at the transcenter, that is the responsibility of the City of Upland? That is correct. Okay. Then when, why is it then that, for example, last year around 4th of July, we had some issues regarding fireworks being lit at that very location on the trail? Why did Montclair Fire respond to that?
Well, it is, it's one of those jurisdictional issues, so when somebody reports it, in this particular case, they report it to the Montclair Fire Department. And until they arrive and they assess who's responsible, for example, police department goes through this all the time-
time, did a traffic accident occur in Montclair or an adjoining city? They don't know until they get there and they're to assess the incident to determine what jurisdiction it actually falls in.
Do we bill?
No, we do not.
The reporting agency? Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, the deal there of...
Reciprocal agreement?
Well, the deal there was, when the trail came in, I think one of our prior public structure negotiated a deal with the City of Upland, said, okay, you guys be responsible between Central and Montevista, even though that, I think half the trail was in Montclair, other half is in Upland, and then we'll take the responsibility for maintenance only between Montevista and Claremont, which is, it was just an easier way to maintain it than to try to figure out which half is yours, which half is ours. So that's the reason behind that.
Right.
So that's an, I think it's an MOU agreeing between...
That is correct, but there is another layer that is in relation to fire-related services that isn't necessarily in play with police department, and that is that the joint dispatch center simply dispatches the closest available unit. So what, does it matter whether it's in Montclair or Upland? If a unit is the closest unit, then that's the one that gets dispatched.
And that's absolutely correct. I have an app here that, that I've seen that, that happens now, so I appreciate that. And question, for the restrooms, Ed, the proposed restrooms being installed, is that west of Montevista, I assume?
Yes, it's just east of Claremont Boulevard is what it is.
Yeah, east of Claremont Boulevard, that's...
It's at the trailhead of the Pacific Electric Trail.
Montclair will maintain the restrooms, and I believe the SBCTA grant pays for the restrooms.
Yes, yes.
All right. So what's next here? It looks like next is, now I'm starting to get confused.
C3.
C3, who's got C3?
I do.
Go ahead.
I am tickled to know that there will be law enforcement services at Montclair High School, but my question is, have we talked to OMSD? And I'm asking that question because I understand that there have been some middle school students here in town who have threatened to shoot up their school. So while yes, it's great that Chaffee Joint is doing that, but Ontario Montclair should, I think we should be talking to them about that issue as well.
So we have talked to them in the recent past and with the things that have gone on the, in Texas and everything, we did provide them some additional services just as extra precaution in, in the last few weeks, particularly coming up to the end of the school year, but we haven't engaged with them in another contract yet because we don't have the staffing to actually staff that particular position. So that's why there isn't one with Ontario Montclair School District right now.
But we're looking that direction, though, should we have enough staff?
Yes, yes. There will be an SRO with them again in the future.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you, and I just want to say one thing on the agenda, which is items C7 and C8, the after-school program, and also the summer programs for children. And I had a chance to visit some of the after-school programs a couple of weeks ago. You know, after, you know, obviously what's happened in Texas, I'm a firm believer that we need to teach our children principles and teach them, you know, positive activities and love and goals and your future, and I am proud of, I think, these programs, and I would challenge all my councilmembers to attend these and see what we do here in Montclair for our children, not just within the Ontario Montclair School District and the Montclair High School, but also what we do with our after-school program. And Marsha, I'm very impressed, and again, I encourage my councilmembers to go to visit. So let's have a motion.
Mr. Mayor? I'll move for adoption of the full consent counter as presented.
Thank you. So with that, let's go ahead and let's have the electronic vote. There it is. That's adopt at 5:0. So we'll go down to communications, and I'll start with communications, human services.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a busy week. We had our Memorial Day event last Monday. Thank you to the CAC and all the staff that assisted in that program. We've heard from a few people who commented that it was one of the best Memorial Day programs, and today we even received a thank you note in the mail. I also want to say thank you to everyone who attended our Country Fair Jamboree on Saturday. We estimate over 3,500 participated in the event and enjoyed the over 40 vendors, the carnival rides, splash pad, food, games, contests, and music. It was perfect weather for the event, and I especially want to thank the Country Fair Jamboree Committee that was made up of representatives from all city departments along with the Chamber of Commerce. We appreciate all your efforts in making this family fun event so successful. Also wanted to mention that today Bingo restarted at the senior center, and we ended up serving over 100 lunches. Bingo will continue every Monday now, except holidays, following lunch from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Other programming started up this week includes line dancing on Thursdays from 1:00 to 2:00, and on Fridays we'll have arts and crafts from 9:00 to 11:30, and bridge from 1:00 to 3:30. On Thursday, June 23rd, we'll also have a representative from the Department of Aging and Adult Services joining us from 10:00 to noon. Our senior center doors are open Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00, so please stop by for a visit to say hello or join in activity. And finally, I wanted to announce that the 61st Annual Summer Concert and Movie Series will start next Tuesday night at Almohalfman Park. The first concert on June 14th will be the band Suave, playing Latin favorites. On June 21st will be an old-school concert by the band Bump Town. The first movie is scheduled for June 28th, and it's Disney's Encanto. The band starts at 7:00 p.m., movies will begin at 8:00, and the evenings will include free children's activities, refreshments for sale, and the splash pad will remain open until 8:00 p.m. A schedule of bands and movies can be found at the door, and they're also, of course, on our website, and they'll also be received on a postcard that will be sent to all the residents in Montclair. And we look forward to seeing you all at the park.
Yeah, Marsha, I just want to say, and then obviously Robert and other department heads participated in Monica, the, the, the Country Fair Jamboree was very much a success. I hear a lot of good comments, I had several people who came for the first time and thought it was a very organized, interesting event, and I will say also, the Memorial Day event also went very well, and I had a lot of compliments on that as well. Thank you. So now we go down to a city attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item, the one indicated in the agenda, and that's to ask the councilmembers to meet in closed session regarding labor negotiations with Mr. Starr. Other than that one item, I have nothing else this evening.
Thank you. City Manager Starr.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to wish you and your family best wishes during your serious issue that you're facing right now with your father.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna do something new that I thought about, I'm gonna do it, and I think every month there's special designations, especially to recognize the diversities of different people and groups, especially here in Montclair. So I know here in Montclair, during the month of June, not just Montclair, but month of June, I know, I suspect Mayor Protim Ru will say something about this, but today is June 6th, it's D-Day. On June 12th, it's gonna be the Philippines Independence Day, so recognize our Philippine community. June 14th is Flag Day, wanna recognize that day. I know Father's Day is coming up, so I want to recognize all the fathers here in the City of Montclair during the month of June. And then we also have this month is the Caribbean American Heritage Month here, and so I want to recognize all those residents who, who come from one of the Caribbean islands and live in Montclair. And then two other events I want to bring up, this month is LGBT Pride Month, I want to recognize all of our LGBT residents in the City of Montclair, and recognize this important date during the month. And then finally, I want to recognize June 19th, this is Juneteenth Day. Obviously, this is a date that's become more significant, including national holiday, state holiday, and now some cities and county holidays, and I want to recognize this day is the day that essentially slavery came to an end, and this is the day we remember that. So just, and I'll be doing this for every month, so. Last Friday, I had a chance to meet with Senator Robles, Susan Robles, along with the Gold Line Construction Authority Board in San Dimas.
Mr. Mayor, you mean Susan?
Rubio. Did I say Robles?
Yes.
I was afraid of that. Rubio. She'll be, technically, she should be our state senator here in Montclair, it's coming December through election process, but this is a, I believe, a key week for the funding of the Gold Line Construction Authority. Just what I'm hearing is, there's a possibility that during the budget negotiations coming up this week, that there may be something in the budget, a line item in the budget, or a non-aligned item in the budget, but designated to Montclair. I know that Chairman Chris Holden, the budget chairman, Chris Holden from the Assembly, and Chairman, Budget Chairman Quarantino from the State Senate are really pushing hard for this. I understand that, I know there was, Bill can probably correct me on this, but last week or two weeks ago, there was a challenge to the Assembly leadership and some concerns that maybe that'll cause some emotional damage, and I understand that at least our local representatives, including Fred Rodriguez, and it's only been Fred Rodriguez and it's only been Chris Holden, supported the speaker on this. So I will, I'm hoping that by June 15th, which is the deadline coming up later this week, that, that the gold line, the $750 million is in the budget and it's approved. But I'll hold my vote, hold my breath on that one. I also want to state that the three of us, Connie and Councilmember Denise Johnson and Mayor Protim Ru, we attended ICSC in Las Vegas, the International, well, used to be called the International Conference of Shopping Centers, but it's a shopping center conference, and I know we had a lot of good contact there. And I just want to say this, that, I'm not gonna do anything today because he's, my father's still alive, but there's a lapel pin over here, has, has the American flag, and it has the flag of Basque, which is Basque is located in France, Spain, and I'm wearing this for my father, and I want to say this real clear, I will not be the mayor of Montclair if it wasn't for my father. He's the one that put the interest in politics and current events, reading newspapers, in fact, I just sat in his hospital room, and I know some people don't like CNN, but I had CNN there, and I watched CNN on my iPad, and because my dad always enjoyed watching the news. So with that, I'm gonna give it to Mayor Protim Ru.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we, I will start where he mentioned about Senator Rubio. I was unable to attend that due to the fact I am a member of the Santa Ana Regional Water Quality Control Board, and we had a rather lengthy meeting starting at 8:00 a.m. in Riverside, but I did have the opportunity to meet with the senator on Saturday evening. We were able to get together, and we talked about the gold line and a number of other issues facing the region in Montclair, and I can assure you, she is fully behind the gold line and many of the issues that we have here in the city. I, as the mayor mentioned, I did attend ICSC, which was the shopping center conference. We had many good prospects in there. I will keep it very short because I know I've got a rather long item tonight, but we met with Woodmont Development, whether they work for Montclair or not, we can see down the line, but they take existing buildings and convert them into housing, and it's very, very nice what they do, we certainly need more housing here. They do some live-work spaces, they have special meeting rooms for Zoom, it's rather fascinating, and I intend to meet with Jason Nagy from there in a few weeks, just to discuss where it fits, and if it doesn't fit here in Montclair, I have a lot of other contacts in other areas. As I mentioned earlier, this is National Hunger Awareness Day. It's a shame that in a country as rich as ours, we would have anybody who's hungry. The statistic I read is something along the lines of over 40% of our senior or older Americans have food insecurity, and that should never be. We talked about the event in the park, it was wonderful, it was, people were happy. I did have a lady ask me, because we had a petting zoo, if there was a way she could purchase a llama, and I said, well, you'd need to talk to the petting zoo, but we don't permit llamas in Montclair. They are very nice animals, they're beautiful, they're environmentally wonderful, but they're just not a good fit in Montclair, but I told her to talk to the petting zoo. At that event, we did have Montclair After School Program, as was mentioned earlier, they did a wonderful job and presented many of our programs for people to see, some people had never heard about the programs. I also want to mention some people who really did a heroic job that day. At about 3:30 or so in the afternoon, right in front of the, of all places, Montclair Hospital Medical Center booth, a man passed out. He was in his 80s. Immediately, one of our nurses, Ian Rodriguez, went right over to the man, he was, you know, then our chief nursing officer from the hospital, Janaya Egert Bean, she went right over, I was there, we all helped stabilize the man, picked him up, put him in a chair, we, I was able to go over and get the paramedics, in the meantime, Dr. Ahmed from Montclair Hospital and Dr. Lovless from Western University, they were on the scene, they were helping this man. Our paramedics did a great job. Eventually, they did take him to the hospital, but I understand everything worked out, so really, kudos to everybody in an emergency situation that did a really good job. We mentioned Memorial Day, and it was truly a very inspiring day. We know the sacrifices made by our veterans, we know many of them who are on the wall who were killed in action, we have others we honor who were able to serve this country and then return home. I think it's fitting that we talk about this today because today is June 6th. On this day in 1942, the Battle of Midway, and on this day in 1944, the invasion of Normandy, D-Day, probably one of the biggest events that changed the history of the world. It was the largest naval, air, and land invasion in history. About 160,000 troops participated from all of the allied nations. The death toll that day, or during the Battle of Normandy, 4,414 people died defending freedom. 2,501 were from the US, 1,913 were from the remainder of the allied nations. The beaches they entered were nicknamed Omaha, Gold Sword, Juneau, and Utah, and they, they remain in our lexicon today because of the valiant and heroic men who took the beaches that day and saved freedom. And because of that, we still have the right to vote in this country. Whatever your position is, you'll have favorite candidates, I have favorite candidates, you have issues, I have issues, but it's important to vote. If I'm to believe what I read today, I believe it was in Cal Matters, the Secretary of State said only about 14% of the people who have been issued ballots have returned the ballots by mail. Probably many, many will put them in in the next couple of hours, and well, many will take them to the polling place tomorrow, but please vote. Our democracy depends on it. The people who we honored at Memorial Day are asking us to do so. Thank you.
Mayor Protim, Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to first start off by acknowledging that one of our colleagues here in the dais on June 4th was recognized as one of the top 20 distinguished individuals within the 20th Senate District. That recognition was bestowed upon Mayor Protim Ru from current Senator Connie Leva, so congratulations to you, sir, on the recognition that you received this past weekend. You're absolutely welcome. It's good to see that on the walls here outside City Hall will now include the plaques of a 31-year former employee of ours, Rudy Gomez, who was a Vietnam veteran, John Mendez, a longtime resident of ours, Don Vodvarca, Vodvarca, one of our founding members of our city, and of course, Councilman Leonard Politz, who is the longest-serving councilmember to sit at this dais. They will be, their memory will forever be etched and recognized in stone on these city walls, and they join my grandfather up there as well. It's good to see in the crowd tonight residents that we haven't seen in a while, Isabel, good to see you here, Ron and Joni Lindhorst, Roger Lambert, good to see you, it's been a while, I'm glad to see everyone as well and back. Louise, good to see you here. I would love to see more residents come and attend, it'd be great to have you here, but appreciate seeing some nice, friendly faces, longtime residents of ours, those that have been active, so thank you for coming and showing concern and taking some pride in your city, it's to be commended. My colleague, Councilman Ru, touched on it, but tomorrow is Election Day, polls close at 7, I'm sorry, 8:00 p.m., 8:00 p.m. He did touch on the low turnout that is expected, unless, of course, the polls get inundated tomorrow and folks drop off their ballots or those that... tomorrow and folks drop off their ballots or those that vote. But just a reminder, folks, people like Ron Lindhorst and Leonard Politz, Don Vodvarca, Rudy Gomez, they were willing to fight to preserve that freedom and that right to vote, and we shouldn't take it for granted. It's a whole heck of a lot easier to vote now, you've had 30 days to do so, because you had it in the mail. You can still drop it off, you could even drop it off at a drop box out here in the parking lot, and even at the police station, or drop it off at your polling center, or you can surrender that ballot and vote in person, but please make sure if you're going to do that, you bring your ballot and surrender it, so there's, you don't have to vote provisionally. But nonetheless, regardless of your political persuasion or stripes, please do get out there and vote. And then also, I wish, Mr. Mayor, your family the best during this difficult time, especially your mother Maria. May God's peace that passes, all understanding, comfort you all at this time. My thoughts and prayers will be with you all, and I can only imagine what you're going through. So, Mr. Mayor, I will be keeping you in thought and prayer.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, and I just want to say on Memorial Day, too, we recognize the six Montclair residents, three of them were World War II veterans, two were Korean veterans, and then one was a Vietnam veteran. And yes, I agree, the sacrifice, including those 19 Montclair residents that did the ultimate sacrifice, we owe to them to turn out and vote. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll just have a couple of items. One, here in the, over the last short period of time, we've had a couple of people get hit by vehicles where somebody ran a stop sign. And I know right now we are focusing on safe routes to schools and changing those signs for them, but at some point in the future, I really would like us to consider upgrading the stop signs throughout the city to kind of help people slow down. I know if any of you have seen the stop signs near Vernon, you can see them from two blocks away, or if you look at the ones on Howard, you can see them from a far distance away. It may not be what we're going to do right now because we have other things on our agenda, but I really do want to consider upgrading the stop signs, at least those stop signs that we know have a lot of traffic, like on Benson Avenue, those that are highly traveled. So I might like to put that on the agenda at some point in the future.
I will suggest, I believe, Ed, the budget may be addressing that, Ed? Am I correct?
No, not really. That is addressed through the Safe Routes to School Program that we will be bringing back to the council on a regular basis.
Okay. Well, maybe on the budget, when we review the budget, maybe that's a discussion we put on and discuss, we want to expand those flashing lights, but on this, that's where I recommend it be on, the budget.
Okay.
Okay.
And, well, I've got a couple more things. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for citing all of the reasons to celebrate this month, including Gay Pride Month and all of the ones that you listed, and I think that's a great idea that we recognize all of them every month. The question I have, though, is when it's appropriate, is it possible, maybe it's already been done, I just haven't been out at nighttime to look, but when it's possible, can we use the city lights to recognize that thing, whatever it is, every month? I really would like to see that. And lastly, there are probably millions of people who fought, some of them died, for the privilege to walk into the polls and vote at the ballot. So while I appreciate all of the people who are voting early, I think it's great that you vote, no matter how you vote, as long as you do it, but I will be walking into the polls in respect for the people who gave their lives for the privilege to do that. So if you haven't already voted, I'll see you at the polls tomorrow. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Clarification real quick. Regarding our colleague, Ms. Johnson's item, did I hear correctly to add discussion of enhancing not just school signage, but enhancing it for other major streets to be discussed at the budget?
That is correct.
Yeah, the blinking stop signs, I believe that's the clarification, I understand, and I asked, the request of Councilmember Johnson, I suggested we put it on the, on our budget workshop.
No, I would, I'm pleased to see, I would concur, I would support you on that, Ms. Johnson, thank you.
Okay.
That I would consider that we look at demand lights as well. They've been proven across this country to work. It cuts down on accidents, and I don't care what standard we're set to with the county, demand lights save lives.
Okay, I don't know anything about demand lights, but we'll have the blinking lights on the budget session. And Councilmember Martinez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor DeTray. So the, I just wanted to reiterate the Country Fair Jamboree and the Memorial Day event, they turned out fantastic. We had a huge turnout, and it was so nice to see the Public Works Department and the Police Department and the Fire show their faces there, and they've always been so supportive at our events. The volunteers with the Community Activities Commission, all the other departments in the city that give their time to put those events on did a fantastic job, and I, this may have been mentioned, and if it was, I'm going to mention it again because I think that it's amazing, but there was a $227,544 award for the Pacific Electric Trail Bridge and $100,000 from SBCTA, which together covers the entire cost of the trail. That is amazing. None of that money is taken from our budget, covered completely, so I just want to recognize City Manager Starr for the outstanding efforts in getting that accomplished. That's all, thank you.
All right, thank you. So we'll get ready to go to closed session, but I just want to say it will be a journey's memory of the Walleye Texas Community and Robb Elementary School. So we will now go into closed session. Thank you.